Committee of the whole meeting get started and ask our clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
Present.
And everyone's present and we have a form.
Great, if I might please stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So approval of minutes, minutes from our June 22nd meeting was in your packet and I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So.
Second, I've got Smiley and Marsh, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we're gonna roll right into our administrative matters at this point, so I'm gonna call on Chief Newby to give us our quarterly police department report and Chief Newby and I know Tom, few of you actually want to appreciate, I know we didn't have a meeting last month. Appreciate y'all holding over to this month, I hope that didn't miss the meeting, hope didn't cause y'all much distress, we can't wait to hear what you got to say.
All right, I'll try to make it quick, so for April 1st to June 30th, we wrote a total of 509 citations totaling 1,215 traffic offenses, so what that means is you can, you can get multiple charges on one citation, so somebody might have been pulled over for speeding, but they also maybe didn't have insurance, wasn't wearing a seatbelt. So that's why there's 509 individual citations with, with the total of the 1,215 charges. It's not scrolling. There we go. So this is a map of where each citation was written, so you can see we're not staying focused in one area. The citations were issued all over the place. So the next category was the, let's see which one they got up here. So this is the total arrest for drug charges. And you can see these are the areas where the drug arrests were made, so we had 106 citations with a total of 275 offenses. Again, meaning if somebody had possession of marijuana, they may have had drug paraphernalia with them as well, and this is the areas where those arrests were made. So this was the, this is the map of the total arrest that we made. And that could be anything from warrants, drug charges, DUIs, whatever, but there were 623 arrests were made totaling 1,089 criminal charges. If anybody has any questions along the way, just let me know. These are total criminal charges involving a handgun, and this is the areas where those arrests were made for any crime that involved a handgun.
I've got a question, Chief.
Yes.
Of the ones that you all have arrested for handgun charges, how many are convicted felons or what percentage are convicted felons?
I, I would have to pull that stat and, and that reminds me, any, anytime if there's a certain number or any certain crime or offense that you all would like to see, I can pull these numbers from KY Ops, so if there's anything in particular that you all would like to know, you just let me know and I can get those for you, but I can find that out.
Yeah, that'd be good, thank you.
So the last one, these are the collisions that we worked, we worked 299 collisions, 54 of those had injuries and we had one fatality in the quarter, and this is the location of each of those collisions. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
I do.
Yes, sir.
How do we cut that number in half?
If, if, if we had an answer to that, I mean, we'd.
And the reason I ask, I mean, it's like since COVID, it's just gone up and up and up and, and I'm out in the public lot, I see the aggressive drive in, the speeding, you know, I'm like, why is everybody in such a hurry to get there?
Well, it's, it's a combination of people speeding, people texting on their phones, people doing whatever they do while they're driving, eating, putting on makeup, I mean, you name it, it's just, it really comes down to distracted driving and speed.
It's no win for anybody when somebody has accident, it's the craziest thing I ever say.
Sure. Yeah, cell phones is, cell phones is the biggest one.
Is it?
Any other questions about any of that? All right, I had, I have something I wanted to read to you all. So when I came on as chief, I asked you and the citizens for patience and understanding during the administrative transition. So with my command staff now in place, we are in week three of this administration and we're currently working on many changes within the police department. I've received nothing but support from city council, the city administrator, the mayor, everyone within the city government and nearly all the citizens in our community, and for that I'm truly grateful. I stated before, I won't make everyone happy and will make decisions that everyone will not agree with. Some they'll agree with, some they won't, but no matter what I do, I will always be, it'll always be a decision that I feel is fair, right, and legal. When I started in this position, I had 10 visions for the next five years, five of those have already been accomplished. The police department is fully staffed, we have constant day patrols on the rails of trail, we have a mission oriented unit to combat gun violence in our city, we have a mission oriented unit to combat drug trafficking in our city, and we have a homeless outreach program to address our homeless population, which is what I passed around for you all to look at called my brother's keeper. We're getting photos of our homeless, finding out why they're homeless, getting contact information for the next of kin and seeing what we can do to help them. So the other five goals are on the way to being accomplished as well, however, tonight I'm adding another vision, which is going to go to the top of my list. I will bridge the gap between the Hopkinsville Police Department and all citizens in our city. And when I say all, that means the citizens that want to bridge the gap, I understand there are some people that thrive on hate, controversy, and drama. And for those that choose to live like that, I truly feel sorry for them. I will continue to meet with citizens, I will continue to meet with the community leaders, and I will continue to meet with organization leaders. But I cannot accomplish this alone. It's gonna take all of us, it's gonna take all the citizens, all the organizations, and it's gonna take the media to help us. And I just ask for everyone envision what we can accomplish together as a united community if we stop arguing and start listening to each other. Thank you all.
Thank you, do you have any more questions for Chief Newby? Guess not, I'm gonna call on Chief Futur now for our quarterly fire department update.
All right, let me see if I can get this computer back. Let's remind tomorrow. All right, let's see if we can get this work. Good evening, okay, so I'll go through this pretty quick. Total fire incidents were 1121, which was up from last year significantly, with 3.9% of those being fires, which is, is normal for us and is pretty on par with the national average, with the majority of our calls being rescue, emergency medical service calls. These are types of fires, residential fires at eight, not residential fires at 11. These are our public events for the summer, we were really busy this summer. We try to get out as much as we can, we always do this, we, we've got a lot of more stuff coming up that we'll put on our social media just to put that out. These are our EMS calls, again, extremely busy, we've kind of capped out for EMS calls, which is good for this quarter. Before I move on, I, I know that was kind of quick, but I would like to talk about something real quick, it's important to me, important to our department. If you've ever sat through one of my, one of my presentations, I give presentations all the time on behalf of the city and the fire department at Kiwanis or Rotary or have talks, people come to the fire department, a big part of what I discuss is, is mental health and, uh, mental health in the, in the fire service. Recently, I was able to attend the Fire Chief Summit, it's a, it's a national summit where I get to talk to fire chiefs and we discuss things that are national problems and I was down there for a few days and sat through four, four different topics, three of the four were mental health in the fire service and the issues that, that we're having. So for police, fire, EMS, dispatch, for all these, we are twice as likely to commit suicide than any other person. Twice as likely, police and fire, and that's huge. And, and we understand that, that what we do is inherently dangerous, we, it's what we sign up for. We, we come to work knowing that we're willing to risk our lives for people that we don't know and for property that we don't own. But, but this is staggering, a, a new study has come out, we are more likely to die from suicide than any other line of duty death, and so mental health in the fire service and, and, and the police department with our dispatchers, with our EMS crews, has always been at the forefront. Unfortunately, recently, I've had to have some discussions with Troy and the mayor, and I'm not here to ask you for anything, but what those discussions brought forth were immediate action on their behalf. So what I would like to say is that on behalf of, of my personnel and, and all of the emergency workers in the city, that we appreciate the stance that this city has taken to support their personnel, because it is huge, they see it, we feel it, and, and there was zero question, we, we had no choice, we, we ran into some issues that we've never ran into before, met with Troy, met with the mayor, and it was immediate, that day, things changed in our department, and that was in the last few months. And things will have changed forever in our department, so know that, that we are going through this, but know that the city and the city administration is supporting us and we see that and we feel it, and eventually we may need more help. Police Department brought on several chaplains this year to help with that, and so we, we are doing things to protect our employees and the city is backing us and we appreciate it. Are there any questions?
I, I do.
Yes, sir.
If suicides are your number one situation issue.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you guys in the city hire a chaplain that can informally be full time or whatever and be able to informally go around and visit all the workplaces?
We have that.
And make a friend?
We absolutely have that, the, the police department has hired three and I have one that's full time staff now that is training in PTSD, is training in suicide prevention, he is training in, in all of that. And, and it has made a huge difference, it's, it just has, you know, and one, one of the, the talks that I was in, I was at a round table doing a discussion, I was sitting with the, the chief from New Orleans Fire Department, and they were like, okay, what's everybody doing? And this was recent, and I said, I said, well, this is what I've done, and, and people were shocked, and the New Orleans Fire Chief said, we have that as well, we were the only two departments out of 12 that, that had done that. And that makes such a huge difference, but for us, and, and we have always done those things, we, we have these calls and then we have mandatory critical incident stress debriefings and, and we bring in people that have never been in the fire service, that have never been a police department, that have never been shot at, never been in a house fire, never did CPR on a child, and we tell these stories and the shock on their face, and it's not that they're not professional and, and awesome at what they do, but there's a difference, so if you're able to talk to somebody, the, the person that works for me is a firefighter, he's a, a, a paramedic that has been on the trucks, in the, in the, the fire with, with our people, and they trust him, and so that's, that's what we needed, and that's what I asked for, and, and they gave me that, that day, that day. And so that's why I'm here to, to say thank you to them, they didn't know I was gonna do it, they'll probably get mad at me, but that's okay. I know it's gonna be a busy night, but I felt like I needed to say it, because our people feel it and it made a direct, immediate impact to my department.
Mayor, no, you had. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, he, he is a trained marriage counselor as well, so if, we offer that, and I've, I've reached out to, to all of city departments, you know, we have this available. This, like, it, it was, it was one in a million for us, he, he has been a pastor for years, he, he runs a church, so he is, he was already a counselor in a lot of things, he was, he's past military, he was retired from military, so for us, it was, it was perfect. And he's been working for us for several years in, in fire and critical care paramedics, so we wanted to make sure that we offered all of those services, because even, you know, people, you know, mental health is, it's so evolving, and so they're doing studies now on the physical stress that your body takes from, from the mental abuse of, of what we see every day and what they have to, to deal with. We have no choice, when somebody calls 911, it doesn't matter what it is, whether it's a, an assault or, or a child or a, a bad wreck or somebody that just ran over four or five people at the same time, well, it, obviously that's a mental stress, but it is also a physical stress and it's something that we have to address, and so the stance that the city has taken is, is the right stance and it is appreciated.
Councilmember, we provide also for all city employees, and Kenny can better explain, they have access to discretionary counseling, you can go through telehealth or 1-800 numbers from their homes, from anywhere, it's completely discretionary. The city's insurance covers that, and Kenny frequently emails out the, the entire city staff for that.
Mine's a little different topic, but would you talk briefly about the AEDs that you all helped put in?
Yes, uh, uh, we were fixing, we were gonna do a big thing on that, I was gonna bring that up to the next one, but those AEDs, we, we had a, a doctor, Dr. Patel, bring us a check, he's like, I want to do something for the department, what can we do? Here's, he just wrote us a check, and so what we did with that was we, we bought AEDs for, for all over the city in our parks and those locations are on our website and they're on the city website, and they're in a lockbox, and when somebody calls 911, they will give them a code to open that up, and it is a very easy to use, self-explanatory AED to be able to help with, with any issues that we have.
Thank you all and Dr. Patel for doing that, that's a big benefit.
It is, it's, it's huge, yes, sir, absolutely.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve.
Jump in there.
On the funeral mental health part of this, uh, we are working very close with, with them over there. Y'all will be hearing from them in the next upcoming weeks with the police department, our department's got some more coming on to help them. She's writing a grant for us, the county, for the jail, the sheriff department, police department, and all in city employees that we can and will be able to help more and more, because they do have, they're all under a lot of stress and they have a lot to deal with, and I don't want to hear any one of our employees committing suicide, if we have any way we can help them, we are going to help them, and that's where we, our hands are out to the fire department and police department and all public service.
Chief Futur, are you? More questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I just one question, do you have an average or maybe a number of how many suicides we've had, maybe in the last year or two for workers?
For the fire service?
Or the, i- i- if you don't have it, you could email it to us.
But I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Chief Futur? You good?
Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. So now, we will move on to our quarterly code enforcement report, Mr. Tom Britton.
I'm not sure how to get the chief's stuff off of here.
Oh, it's short, short and sweet then, there you go, Tom.
All right, Chairman Keel gave me all of five minutes, he said he was gonna cut me off after that, so I'm gonna go through this. I'm gonna go through this pretty quick, if I skip over something, you have questions, please stop me. All right, we talked about this last quarter, these are just the ordinances that are enforced through CDS. We talked a little bit about process and how we go from notice of violation to citation as well as going through the code enforcement board. Gave you a summary of last year, we had a total of about 1,200 cases, all types, last year, I will tell you, we're at 1,200 now, so we're gonna well surpass 2022's total. We talked about also some changes for 2023, some of the mayor's initiatives, enhanced code enforcement, more proactive code enforcement. So, talk about the numbers, so for grass trash and weed. How about now, is that better? All right, so April, June were low rainfall months, May was not, July and August had been wet, so 15 days into August, I've got more cases or we've got more cases than we had all month of June. Basic property maintenance code, we're running about 300%.
I will say it was a great report, Mr. Britton, does anybody have any questions for Tom?
Got a couple. Steve, I just want to say thank you. So in, in, I'll, I'll speak for Ward 7, because I, that's, that's where I drive around and make sure that things are taken care of, and I've watched, I've watched the, the cleanup happen, I mean, it's been like overnight, so thank you very much for the hard work, thank you.
Tom, do you think that's something you could just start sending out to everybody monthly, possibly? That would be great, that way we not just kind of have the same information. Thank you.
Excuse me. We'll, we'll get that at the same time we get the packet for the.
I, whenever he sends it.
If that's possible.
I'm just saying, he'll just send it from codes to us on a monthly rotation. Yeah, that'd be great. All right. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Britton. So now we were going to roll right down to the monthly agency and board council appointee reports. I'm going to call on our Ward seven council member, Doug Wilcox.
All right. Thank you, Steve. So I sit on three boards, housing authority of Hopkinsville, Hopkinsville Christian County Industrial Development and Real Solid Waste. Of those three boards, housing authority is the only board that's met this year and we've met monthly. So saying that, first off, I want to thank the Hopkinsville Housing Authority and Vicky Smiley for their hard work. Their entire team is incredible. The, the work and organization that they have in that office is incredible. They have a big job. So there's 2,000 individuals and families on a waiting list for subsidized housing in Hopkinsville, Christian County right now. Seems like a big number to me. You know, some contributing factors to why we have so many on a waiting list. Section eight landlords are continuing to pull out of, of the business and then they're going to, to rent to those that can't afford. And, you know, there's a shortage of housing across the board, not just in Hopkinsville. So that's a factor as well. Housing is actively pursuing new projects to create available units. So that's how they're combating the section eight landlords pulling out. They're going to create their own units, develop those, and then they're going to supply those homes to the waiting list. So part of that is purchasing apartment complexes, actively pursuing new grants for development. A component of the 2,000 individual family waiting list is, is seniors. There's a large number of seniors in Hopkinsville that are, that are waiting on homes, don't have a place to live. So as part of that, there's been a, they had a win. Goodacre Village is going to be developed off of Lover's Lane and that was a, a grant that was awarded as, in response to the, to the senior deficit or the senior housing deficit. So that's, that's the housing authority update and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for Doug? All right. We'll move over to our Ward eight representative, Mr. Terry Meek.
Well, thank you. I sit on the airport board and there's quite a few initiatives that are going on currently with the airport board to meet FAA requirements for elevation and slope for aircraft to take off and land. We have gotten permission to trim trees in the Trail of Tears. We're waiting on the surveying to mark all of those trees. Once those are marked, then the cutting will come in. They'll trim the trees to meet that FAA requirement. Next thing that we're working on is we currently have probably about 30% done on a new hangar that should store, I believe, about 10 aircraft, if I'm not mistaken. And then they'll work on the older one and bring that up to speed. And that's at the west end of the, of the runway. And then we are also working on getting the land that the city owns deeded to the airport, one, one parcel of it. It's going to be surveyed and once the surveying is done, then we'll look at deeding that over and that will enable the airport then to build more hangars for a corporate hangar space at the east end and then at the west end of the airport. That will be for the local individuals that have aircrafts on the local level. So there's a lot of initiatives going on right now with the airport and I'm very optimistic. I'm usually that way anyway, but I'm overly optimistic to see some things begin to move over there and I just couldn't be pleased to be part of that board. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Terry. Any questions for Terry on the airport board? All right. Thank you very much. Quarterly business list review, it's in your packet. Any questions, comments, complaints on the business review? If not, great. No unfinished business. So we will roll right along to new business and I see her making her way to the podium now and going to be there for a little while. So I'll dispense with recalling you, Mr. Melissa Clayton, to start with the 2023 property tax rates and a few other things.
Good evening. All right. So we're going to start tonight with the property tax rate. I had a memo in your packet that kind of explains what my recommendation is for the year. Before I get to that memo, I just wanted to start out by saying that last year's rate was the lowest property tax rate since 1999 for city taxpayers. So this year, our total property tax assessments increased again. So I put three years up for you guys to see. In 21, they were 1 billion, 828 million. In 2022, they were 2 million, oh 40, 2 billion, oh 48 million. And then this year, our total property assessments is 2 million, 184 million. So in 2023, assessments has increased by 136 million, 787, 443. And that number figures into the maximum rate that we are allowed to take as a city. We also experienced a lot of new growth in our property tax assessments this year. So I, I went ahead and listed the last three years of assessments. So we had incre, new growth of 34 million, 561,376 dollars in our property tax assessment. That's our growth for the year. So we, when we calculate the property tax rate, we normally calculate the compensating rate and then we calculate the maximum rate allowable by KRS 132.027. So of those two rates, both of those are less than the rate that we had last year. And so my, my recommendation for real property is to take the maximum rate allowed at 22.3 cents per 100, to leave the personal property tax rate what it is at 23.9 and then motor vehicles where it was at 25.1. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about property taxes.
Any questions on the property tax rate?
I have a question. Can you go back one slide? On the real property, what was last year's rate?
22.5.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Any discussion? Was we need a motion to send?
I'll make a motion that we forward this to council.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I didn't, Natasha, I'm sorry, I didn't say. You got to holler at me every now and then. Hold on one second though. I have a motion from, we'll go back to your question, Amy. And what was the motion?
My motion was that we forward this to council.
22.3.
2023 property tax rates as presented.
As presented, the 22.3.
Yep.
Okay. And then who got my second over here? Doug Wilcox. Thank you. I'm sorry. Had, had, had three things happening at once. Did the best I could. Go ahead, Madam Francis.
The, the PowerPoint is not in your packet. It, it's, I, but I can send it out to you guys after tonight if you'd like it. You're welcome.
All right. We got a motion second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to the financial handbook policies and procedures.
All right. So next we're going to talk about the current financial handbook policy. When we ended the year, we talked about what happens to the excess that's left over. So the current policy is 50% goes to capital, 10% goes to economic development, 10% goes into the pension reserve and 5% goes into the health trust fund. What I'm going to talk to you about tonight is the pension rates. So pension rates are on the decline from the state and that is a lot due to the, there's a lot of complicated things that go into the state deciding what our pension rate is going to be. But they went down this year instead of up. So we didn't have to use any of our pension reserve. And what I wanted to tell you guys is that they are projected to decrease over the next 10 years. So I've put that on the screen for you. The projected pension rates now from the state are, they're projecting a decrease every year for at least the next 10 years. So the current balance in the pension reserve is 1,201,994. So we are bringing before you a recommendation to not put any more into the pension reserve since we're not going to be using it over the next 10 years. The rates are going to go down. We're not going to need to use the pension reserve. I'm not recommending moving it. I'm recommending keeping it there, but just not adding anything to it. So our recommendation is to take that pension reserve fund and, and put that 10% instead of into pension reserve into a building maintenance account to help maintain the city's buildings and properties and roofs and air conditioners and all those things that we need to purchase as a city. So that's our recommendation. Did I say something funny?
You didn't.
Okay.
I don't think anybody got it but me.
Okay. Sorry if I said something wrong. So.
JR is going to have a pop knot on his shin from that table.
Okay. So our recommendation is to change the financial handbook policies and procedures to move that 10% into a building maintenance fund instead of into a pension reserve fund.
Any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion. Second.
I've got Mr. Marsh and I'm going to go with Mr. Wilcox again. Any, any discussion?
I got a.
All right. Fire away.
It depends on what the excess is each year. So. Yeah. And it's only if we have one. So in the handbook, it says if there's no excess in the general fund, then there's no, no amount goes into any of the reserve funds if there's no excess. This is just if there's an excess and what happens to that excess after it happens. So.
Can we find it? Go ahead.
One more question. With us doing that, would it, being that we had a problem with before about the pension? Remember the pension, we had a problem.
Yeah. Several years ago, yes.
Yeah. I was just wondering if we do that this time, what your recommendation is? Will that have a problem with us in the future? Being that we had a problem about pension funding?
So in the future, if, if pension rates start to go back up, we can always amend this policy. But right now, because they're projecting the rates to go down, we don't see a need to keep putting money into this fund where it's just going to sit there and not be used. We'd like to use the money to maintain our buildings.
So I have two questions. So the, the first one is we're going from 10% additional funding into the pension back to just the normal funding rate and, and basically zero overage on it, correct?
We wouldn't put anything extra in the pension fund. It would remain where it's at.
Okay. You said that there's, I guess, formulas and, and the, what are the key drivers of, you know, because the whole time I've been on council, it's like pension, 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 pension. And now boom, it's different. What are the key drivers that are making the powers that be wherever say that this is coming down? I, I don't understand why it's coming down.
I will tell you that a lot of it has to do with interest rates. So there's a certain pot of money that's sitting there that pays out pension and as interest rates go up, the amount of money that goes into that pot increases, of course. And so some of it is driven by interest rates, not all of it. They have, we have been, I would have to like get the actuary out and show you the state's actuary and what, what, how, what all is driving that. But the simplest explanation I can give you without getting into too much is interest rates drive some of that.
So that's the key, key driver?
That's one of them. Yes.
Thank you.
So the 10% going into building maintenance reserve, is that already a line item in our budget or are we going to have a new line for reserve?
It, it, it's not a line item in the budget. It'll be one of the reserve accounts. When I present the monthly financials, there are the reserve accounts that I list. It will become one of those accounts on that list. It'll be a building maintenance reserve fund. It'll be there.
Okay. Can that be used for, I mean, I know it can be used, you said air conditioners and general maintenance, which is probably already lined up. It's probably already covered in our budget to a certain degree, right? Can we use it for, for cleaning up the city when we, we need, when we need to address a structure or?
Well, it is a new fund. So I would say that the parameters of what the uses are have not been set, but every department has building maintenance. Let me just start with that. Every single department in the city, when you look at their budgets, they all have their own building maintenance account. What's not included and what your current department heads and your administration are working on, we're about to bring you guys a five-year capital improvement plan. And in that plan, we are developing what the needs are, looking at, you know, how old are, are all of our air conditioners? How long has it been since we've had a roof replaced? We want to, we want to start planning for those kinds of things instead of waiting until the roof is leaking to have somebody come out and fix it and then it's an emergency. We want to start.
Proactive, proactive.
Proactive.
Okay.
Any more questions on this? More discussion? Do we have a motion to set you on the floor? All in favor of making the change, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Forward that right on to council. And now we are to the inner city rez zone budget.
All right. So the inner city rez budget was in your packet. I don't really have any more explanation. These categories have been around for a long, long time. This is our recommendation for this year's inner city rez budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions on this? I'll entertain a motion in a second. Forward this on.
I'll make a motion.
I've got Councilman Craig and Smiley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Send that right on and we'll go ahead with the operational budget amendment.
All right. As our first operational budget amendment, we have several items we need to take care of. One of those is dealing with the excess from last year. So the first part, we're going to use prior year revenue because of the excess to get the funds that are required in the financial policy to the right place. And those items are highlighted. We've also made the decision to move the litter abatement grant to the grant account instead of running it out of the operational account. So we have a decrease in revenues and we have a decrease in expenses because they were budgeted in the operational budget and we need to take those out and move them to the grant fund. So that's really just a housekeeping item. And then the other items, we've, we've been contracted with the school system to supply two additional school resource officers. And if you have questions about that, I'll have to call on Chief Newby. But we have a, a need to have some more money in our insurance department and then there's, there's a few other house cleaning items in there. But I would have to answer questions if you guys have them about what all's in our operational budget amendment.
We'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to forward this to council.
Got a second?
Second.
Great. Any questions? All in favor, forward that to council.
Aye. It's a little delayed.
I think everybody's sleeping tonight. So, oh, wait a minute. We, I think that's all for you.
That's all for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And now we'll call on the new guy, Gary Rubus. I think this is your, uh. This second, second.
First time with slides.
First time with slides. All right. Big night for you, Gary.
Yes, sir. I'm presenting the first capital budget amendment of fiscal year 2023, 2024. The, for the revenues, it's from prior year capital equipment reserve. And the reason we're moving, we want to move 29,713 dollars down to the HPD police and equipment line is because at the end of the year last year, the last fiscal year, we received some checks for totaled equipment. So we put that money back down there so they can use it to purchase more vehicles. And then the second line for the sports flex repairs for $75,000. Got some pictures here. There's some paint disbonding and there's some cracking and expansions in the flooring. They want to use that to clean and scrape the floors, then go ahead and repaint and fill in the expansion joints and stuff like that. There, sure if there's any questions on that, Mike Sear.
This has been coming out, council members. Probably about the first year we opened it. They've got to diamond polish it and make it sort of graphic. Take that paint off and put that gloss. We use it at the little walking trail, mostly for senior citizens that come in early in the morning, like to walk, feel safe. Hopefully that increase that, just in the place of, the mayor follows that show of place that we want to look at. Start taking their, our own assets.
Come, yeah.
Troy, and I just want to double check, but this is more of a cosmetic thing, not a structural problem?
When it first opened, once it started coming up, we worked with the company trying to make this work. He said, she said kind of stuff, you know, we're going warranty and everything else. It, it is. It, it is cosmetic.
Okay. Okay.
But it looks, those pictures, they're very cold, but it doesn't do a job to keep them out there. It's all there, it's all there.
But we don't have any structural problems up underneath and it's going to fall in or anything like that?
It's just got rough enough and it's a graphic wall.
Ms. Francis.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Well, and you?
Yeah, good. I was wondering, is this a once a year or is it just a when it's needed?
Oh, absolutely, when it's needed. It's not an every year thing for the floor. Yeah.
Can I call on? Mike, did you have something to add on that? I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'm looking over at Mike, Mike kind of piped up. I mean, he's not a public works guy. I think this might be the guy to answer this question.
The, of course, the, the issue here is too, though, when the sportsplex built, this was put in after, or afterthought. And it's really paint. We're getting rid of the paint, though. Paint is the issue. So every time you have bleachers moved around, people walking and so forth, it gets cuffed up. The paint starts flaking, whatever. We're, there's going to be diamond grind, get rid of the paint, and it's going to be actually a stain and polish. And the stain will not come up, so this should last you for 20 years.
Awesome.
Yes, so we, we won't have to have this problem anymore, but it needs to be done because it is very unsightly.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Rubus? All right, well, I guess I will entertain a motion in a second. Send this to council.
Motion.
We've got Marsh and Travis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So now, we're down to Mr. Herndon. He knew I was going to call you, why'd you wait? The intergovernmental support agreement for Campbell Road salt. Thanks for.
I'm just going to take a minute. I probably got a chief technology officer timing me at home. So just very briefly, this is a, Fort Campbell wanted to extend the salt intergovernmental support agreement 10 years. So we're coming to, we're concluding the five years next year. And they, they're, they budget seven years out, so they're, they're looking long term. So this extends that out to 10 years. It also, because mayor and council, the budget last year included brine production equipment and distribution for the trucks. And that was one of the benefits of having, of having this agreement. It was that we got brine from Fort Campbell. We take, we took that out and we essentially inserted a 10% administrative fee for doing the work. We got, Public Works does a lot of the work, Finance does a lot of the work, Admin some of the work. So, so it's, it's kind of a team effort to get, get, keep these going. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. It's just a little bit better financial benefit to the, to the city.
No questions on train now.
I have one. I, I just happened to notice that the cost is, you know, significantly higher than it has been in the past. It looked, appeared to me that the cost has basically tripled.
Uh, yes. If you'll notice, they went from 1,200 tons purchased to 2,000 tons purchased. So that, that was one of the, that is one of the changes. I'm remiss to mention that, but they want to maximize their purchaseability. And the other part of this is, we estimated $130, $130 a ton for salt purchase. And we got, we opened bids today and it was quite a bit less than that. So that's going to be a big benefit. If it's approved, which I assume it will be, that's going to save Fort Campbell about $80,000. And us, we can either buy more salt or if we don't need the salt, let that roll over into street construction. So, big benefit.
So we really won't know that final cost until?
No, these are, these are projections, but.
Okay, I got you.
Hopefully they're good projections.
Okay.
It's passed, it's passed through, it's, it, we take it, we take invoice, we take it, we turn around, send it to Fort Campbell, so.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we, you know, move this on to council as is.
Craig, 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 motion second. Anything else? All in favor, push it forward. Any opposed? There we go. All right, we are down to, uh, does anybody have anything else we need to discuss tonight? All right, seeing nothing else, we do have a closed session, so I'll need a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation subject to KRS 61.810. Do I got to say the one and C? One.
C, motion.
Second.
Second.
And with that, we are in closed session.
Aye.
So we are down to our last item on the agenda, which is our adjournments. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
I've got, uh, Meek and Lightning Burger's been trying all night. She's going to get that one. Everybody in favor of being adjourned?
Aye.
We're adjourned.